Good afternoon, Mayor. Geez, already. I just started, can't even get it out of my mouth. Good afternoon and welcome, or evening, geez. Alright, let's start over. Good evening and welcome. Sorry, Councilman Lundin has to take this. Welcome to the Committee of a Whole Meeting for the City of Isani for Tuesday, October nineteenth. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we can all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Geez. Can we start over again? No kidding. Thank goodness we are not in a formal meeting, it's just a committee of a whole meeting, right?
Are we ever formal?
It's the Lions. I've been to their meetings. They have all, it's like a hootenanny. Doing roll call, all council members are present, minus Councilman Gordon, hopefully he comes in late. Any public comment at this time? None at this time, let's move on to the committee meeting items. E1, the police updates, Chief Myers.
Alright, Mayor and two council members. As far as updates, just memo lays out our staffing, you know, we're up to filling our staffing for our levels that we have. Which is our six patrol officers, investigator, lieutenant chief, and CSO, that's ten licensed officers plus the CSO. We just started with our wellness program. So we had our training on that a couple of weeks ago, and then all our officers are meeting with the provider on a one-on-one basis for their wellness assistance. Other thing put in here is just officer retention, I know I talked about it before. As far as we did the recruitment piece, trying to recruit some of the best officers we have, now our focus is retaining them. The biggest challenge we have in law enforcement, whether it's in Minnesota or across the country, is recruitment and keeping officers. So I think we did a good job as far as being able to recruit some of the best that we can. I know other agencies are having a lot of challenges with that, so we did a good job. And now I'm focusing is trying to retain the ones that we have. So we have laid out our six principles of retention. And some of those principles of retention we've already working on, and those are what, that's what we're gonna focus on. So that memo is our six principles of retention. I don't know if we go through them, but those are the pieces that we have.
So, I know... Just because I have a law enforcement degree and I'm nosy like that, and I was in the public sector for twenty years, I still pay attention to... Let's make note that Councilman Gordon has arrived. I pay attention still to different departments throughout the state of Minnesota. I noticed that North Branch is hiring for a crazy amount of money right now. They're also giving amenities to their officers. I'm not gonna go into too much detail, but...
They're on a kind of a rebuild from...
I understand that, but if I worked here and granted that I had great administration, I had a great council, money talks.
Sometimes, depends on the individual.
And I guess I would be in fear of that, I'm sure the chief would be too, that we would lose one of our star police officers to the city of North Branch, and that would, that would definitely damper my day. I don't know about you guys, but... I'm just trying to go over your principles of retention here, Chief.
There, you know, I've ran into that a lot. Their pay might look good, but their medical might be three hundred dollars more a month, so there's a lot to look at, you know?
And actually, that one's a big buzzword in our community, just because their starting pay is higher than our top pay.
Is it a... I mean, I know what I seen in their ad, but compared to ours, is it a big difference?
Like I said, their starting is over our top, so after seven years, they're making more to start, so it's a bigger difference.
I mean, I think we have every one of these covered, other than competitive pay packages.
You gotta weigh apples to apples, I mean. What's their vacation and sick time? What's their health insurance cost to the employee? A lot of that comes out of that pay package.
Then you also got a real... You also got to realize that, that they're eventually, they're gonna start you off with more, but they're gonna fight like tooth and nail, because I'm assuming they're still under the police union contract. And they're gonna fight, the city council's gonna say, hey, we've been paying you way more than this. Union contracts are a tricky thing, plain and simple, straightforward. I mean...
I'm not saying I'm against it or for it, I'm just saying there's a lot more to look at than just the hourly starting pay.
And I'm not saying...
It's gotta be looked at as a whole package.
I'm not saying we need to do this yesterday, I definitely think it's something for this council to think about in their next contract negotiation.
Yeah.
What's your, what's the chief's philosophy in all this? Do you have thoughts?
Well, I, you know, there's six principles, and that's one of the six, so there's other factors in there. But, I mean, I do think my officers are the best officers that there is anywhere, so the compensation should be in accordance.
I agree.
I'm not disagreeing with the chief. I wholeheartedly agree with him. I, I mean, is there any other than these? I see one out of six here, Chief, we're worried about, and...
Well, it's not that we're worried about, I just wanna identify these are the six things, and it's not something that we just check off and say we're done. Every one of these principles is something, it's like our mission statement and our core values that we keep focusing on. And everything we're doing in our department, making sure we're focusing on that, that's why we write them down and have them. So it's something that we can continue to focus on, because if you lose sight of that, it's too late. So the whole thing with retention, if we're not worried about retention until we start moving, losing officers, it's too late. So that's why my focus is on the retention piece now, to retain the quality candidate people that we have. The talent we have there is amazing, so we're doing this stuff now, not after the fact. Because if you do it after the fact, then...
Preventive.
Yeah.
And I know the enrollment is way down for police officers to enter that field of work.
Well, I do know that a neighboring agency posted for hiring, and they had zero applicants, they reposted and got three. So that's our candidate pool. So if we lose an officer, it's kind of, that's what we're looking at. And it's only gonna get worse.
I saw a couple of listings through the league of Minnesota cities, too, that they'll pay you to go to school.
That's a program I think the state, the higher patrols are doing.
Yeah, they've been doing it for quite a while.
Yep.
But there's individual cities that are starting to get on board with that.
Yep.
Because they're having a hard time...
Where was that program when I went to school, they could've paid my college.
Yeah. They're, they're having, like he is, like he said, they're, you know... If you look on there, there's, I don't know how many, twenty-plus listings for multiple police officers.
It used to be that, no back? Geez, when I got out of college, you had a waiting list.
Yeah.
Now it's twenty?
So that's, like I said, that's why our focus is on the retention sites, we're focusing on this. We already have been and continuing to do so, to help retain those officers.
Sometimes it's not always about the money, it's how they're being treated, too. I mean, you, you could...
It's a big part of it, too.
Yep, if they're treated very well, and, you know, you can, you can make ten dollars an hour to go work someplace else, but it's a miserable life that you have. Quality of happiness is a big key, more than, so, just more so than money.
Yeah, like I said, if you look at the six principles, there's six principles that are in there that are multifaceted around that.
You know, I look at, I look at number six, you know, keeping equipment with officers, with modern and efficient equipment and technology. Sometimes that shiny new toy means more to them than two or three dollars on the check, because, you know, you know that you're, they're doing everything you can to give them the best that they can have. And I, I don't disagree with, you know, the pay equity, or however you wanna say it, but equity, but I also, you know, it's a union contract negotiation. You end up giving away money in a contract negotiation, they're gonna lose it someplace else. And I think if we keep them with our cutting edges of equipment and training, that's only gonna benefit them no matter what they do. I, and like I said, I agree that it's something we'll have to discuss when it comes time for negotiation time. I, I think as of right now, they're under a union contract, you know, that they have to buy that as much as we do. So...
What, um, when is the contract, this contract, current contract done?
It goes through 2022. So negotiations will start likely in July of next year, to take effect January of 2023.
And I think at that time, we can, you know, we all have it in our back of our head, and we have to think about it.
It's really not that far to the goal-setting meeting, we should bring it up at the goal-setting meeting, and gives everybody a chance to think.
Well, you know, Mr. Becker's the one that's gonna have to come up with his magic wand and, and figure out how we're gonna make it work if we were to do something like that. It's not, we could promise everything in the world, if we don't have the money to do it, we can't do it.
Well, one thing, if I may, Mayor Council, one thing is, as Councilmember Burgley just stated, we do talk about staffing, staffing levels. And some of pay usually, we do have something on the agenda tonight, which is not typical, but that is usually discussed at goal-setting, just to see where we are. But one thing to take into account is, we are on the cusp of being a metro city. We do, and we have, as we still, as you've just seen your notice about Ms. Selman, we continue to lose people to the metro because of that more competitive pay. And we still, even through that comparative worth study that we did last year, or implemented last year, we did not take the metro pay as that line, we took one below that. So we do know that there are some...
It's still nip and it's in the butt, and I mean, I think you and I have had this conversation, I think we've all had the conversation, retention, no matter where it is within the city of Isani. I mean, the police is, is, that's public safety, you know, I, that's very important, but these guys are just as important, it, I would not, not as, let me correct myself. Public safety is the most important, but they're important as well, you know, I mean...
And public safety goes many ways.
Yeah.
Keeping the road safe for people to drive on, it's a public first department.
Public works, there you go, I mean, it's...
So it's not just the police department, it's...
No, that's what he was saying, though, it's, everybody's got their...
Everybody's, I mean...
Unfortunately, we, as, as every one of us sitting up here, we have a full-time job. And, you know, we get, you know, twice a month that we sit on, or many phone calls during the week, in between meetings, and you know, we make decisions for, you know, that's gonna longevity for this community. And, but, you know, our staff is here seven, six, five days a week, you know, eight, ten, twelve-hour days, and you know, they're, they're the ones that are doing the, brought to the work, we just make the decisions. And sometimes it's not an easy thing to carry on as ourselves either, but no, our staff is very important, I've always been a firm believer, retention, 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 promotion within, promotion within, because you do find more longevity with your staff when you do that. You know, if, if you go out and hire outside of your staff for a promotion, it's not doing your staff any favors, because they don't, where my, where's my growth, where, you know, you know?
My, my dead-end job, you know, etc., I mean, they, their mind starts to wander, and that's not what we want for the staff.
Last year when I had my review at work, it was told that I was topped out in my wages. So does that mean I work harder for less, or do I work less for same pay? I mean, I mean, that's, it's not a good feeling to have to have. Fortunately, that changed, but, but I'm not, what I'm getting at is, is that you get to a point where you can't go any further, so that's going to be money and money on top of that to retain that person. But when you do have somebody that's came in, and I'll take Ms. Wood for an example, she started out to handle in the community center. And where she's at today, it, you know, you, she worked for it, she got to that point, you know? That's, says a lot for somebody caring about where they're at. You know, you can always, you can always be happy at work, or you can be miserable at work and wanna find something somewhere else. So I'd rather see our staff happy at work and knowing that they can get somewhere, and the same with our police department. You know, and like I said, not, it isn't always about money. It's about quality of life at work.
And I'm not taking that away from it, but I mean, I'd still, it would be something to think about if I were to reverse roles and to a police officer's job, and they were to take mine, I I'll tell you what, I, I'd have to actually say meet me halfway somewhere here. And you guys know me, I'm all about meeting everybody halfway, so... Uh, I, just something for us to chew on, food for thought.
Maybe you guys, did you guys already maybe discuss this before I walked in, but I mean, I know when we, we've had really good success with letting people start not at the very bottom of the pay scale, right? So I mean, that's been effective to do that. And that's, but it sounds like our, the top of our pay scale is not lining up with some of the other communities around the area, right?
Well, we, as Ms. Wood said, we, we could've mirrored the, explain how we did it.
The metro, and we took the step lower, right?
So, we took the step lower, which is, now we're gonna lose Ms....
Yeah, well, he was referring to, North Branch is hiring
Right.
people to come there to work for more than we're paying our guys.
And if you were to just go Google North Branch Law Enforcement and see it?
Yeah.
It's crazy.
And that's what that discussion was.
Right. So we haven't lost anybody yet, but I mean, they're starting people at, above what our top pay is, you're saying? Right, okay. So...
I mean, if we do lose somebody, Councilman Gordon, it's, it's too late.
Well, it's a waste of all that time of training and all that effort, and...
It's too late.
Yeah, I mean, I it's been effective to, to get them, I mean, you're fully staffed right now, and you couldn't say that for a long time, right? So I mean, and as far as spending money goes, I mean, this, if we're gonna spend money on anything, that's the one thing that I find with spending money on, if to keep a good group of people in the, the police department, so, pretty important stuff, but but yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I'm open to discussing, I mean, if you think that's what we need to do to make sure we don't lose people, then, then maybe we should look closer at that sooner than later.
I think, what year did you come in, twenty nineteen, end of twenty nineteen, right?
I think so, yes.
So at the beginning of twenty nineteen, when I started as mayor, this police department was ten years behind. So I mean, we've, we've caught them up to speed. They've got all the right equipment, as Councilman Lundin said, they have all the shiny new toys. Um, I mean, I look at that list, and yeah, we, we fit five of the six. We're just, the big ones, the pay, but we also need to keep it going that way, and, and we've all been really darn supportive of not only staff, but the police department, we just gotta keep it rolling, but food for thought come goal-setting, I agree with Ms. Wood.
That's what, Mayor, that's what I was gonna ask, is if you wanna bring this up at goal-setting for further discussion.
Yeah, Councilman Burgley, good point, the Councilman Burgley brought it, let's, let's bring it up. Not only police, but all staff at that matter, I, I don't wanna see anybody go. I think we have the best crew in the state of Minnesota, and I'd like to keep each and every one of you, but I'm not gonna I'm not gonna rob the bank and the citizens either at the same time, so we gotta meet halfway somewhere.
And then, speaking of like staffing, you know, um, how many officers are typically on overnight? Like, say, seven PM and on?
There should be two, so we have two scheduled full-time officers that work that shift.
So what if one's on vacation, how do you handle that?
So if there's one on vacation, we're filling like Friday and Saturday nights, we'll backfill that position. But on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there'll be one officer working.
Okay.
Uh, so we have ten, as far as that, so we have ten full-time officers that work. But with that, I think if you look at each officer has an average of three hundred hours of PTO, sick time, plus an average of a hundred hours of training, so that's four hundred hours of each employee that's working, that's not actually working.
Working.
Right, so if you actually extrapolate that across all ten, you know, it brings us down to like full-time working staff of that seven and a half, eight officers.
So we have, we have thirteen officers total, right?
Well, we have ten full-time officers.
That's including the investigator?
Including myself, lieutenant investigator.
So we have seven?
Patrol.
Six patrol plus the SRO.
So, yeah, before goal-setting session, maybe if there is a way to remedy that one officer, only, you know, one officer being on at night?
It seems crazy.
I, yeah, I'd be open to, to listen to ideas.
And we can discuss that further, and I think Mike probably even has some knowledge in that, the fact that in, as, as cities grow, there's a goofy, and now a numeric one, officers per population, where it's actually, like for us, we're gonna have more officers per population, but then as you go, say, to twenty thousand, you're not adding double, if that makes sense.
It's like two officers per one thousand people. But, so if we looked at that, we're not even up to par.
We're under FBI statistics for our Midwest region population, you know, officer per population, but...
So you got six patrol officers, and that's the only thing I would consider, and not considering detective, lieutenant, or chief in that scenario?
No, you couldn't.
Nope, so that's...
You could use the investigator.
That's two, four, six.
That's seven. That'd be seven with the investigator.
Six patrol officers.
Right.
That's, that's, that's who's working at overnight. Patrolling and everything, that's what we need to look at. The guys that are not doing other duties, you know, like whatever the chief's day is like, or lieutenants, detectives, they're, they're not out patrolling and pulling speeders over, dealing with domestics as quite much as...
But in the past, Councilmember Burgley, we have used the positions such as the chief or the lieutenant to fill in when people are on vacation, though.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Otherwise, it doesn't warrant a whole other position in those times of fill-in, or we used part-timers.
Right, but if we got six patrol officers, that's good for a population of three thousand, two, four, six. So, in my eyes, we're under, correct?
Because we're hitting that, two officers for every one thousand people is what he's taking in consideration.
And I'm not including you in there, because you're not out patrolling full-time.
Well, do we, do we make up for any of that with part-timers? Like, some guys work on the weekends that are part-timers, right, or?
We've got rid of most of our part-timers, except for there's still one left. It's kind of a double-edged sword, they, we'd put money into training them, they'd work a lot for the first few months, and then they would be unavailable for the rest of the three, four years that they're there. So...
Wasn't that your idea, because of that, you didn't want the part-timers, you felt like we were wasting money, so we agreed.
Economics behind it wasn't quite fitting, and even the sheriff's office kinda did the same thing, they went through a lot of money trying to start some part-time people, and it didn't work out for them that well either.
And I don't have a problem with the amount of police officers that we have, I mean, I think if you can do more with less people, pay the people you have better, and, and do more with less.
I'm not gonna disagree with that, that's, that's the way to go.
It's tough when there's only one officer on at night, and he's waiting for a county deputy that's clear across county for an emergency.
They can get there pretty quick.
And it, and it does happen.
Granted, they do get there pretty quick, I'll, I'll admit that, but that would still be an officer safety issue in my mind, but, so...
This is a goal-setting session, so...
How many, how many officers does the county have on deputies, how many deputies do you have?
Thirty-two?
I, no, like overnight, I mean.
Oh.
I think they have around four, three to four.
So they probably have one close by, is that fair to say?
Sometimes.
It's the nutshell game, so it's, most times yes, but that doesn't always mean yes.
It's a big county for four officers.
Well, I'm sure it is, I, I know the counties.
And if...
Let's, 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 uh, let's just move this to goal-setting, and, and we can talk about this in a, in a bigger globe, so to speak. But definitely it's something we should all chew on.
Yeah.
Uh, let's move on to E2, the park naming policy.
Thank you, Mayor and Committee, so, uh, staff has reviewed a number of city policies pertaining to the naming of parks, features, and different memorial giving options. Uh, some of the information on the policies was out of date, others was a little too vague for us to have a clear set guideline. So staff is recommending that the policies be combined into one effective policy, and that will provide more clear guidance on the naming of future parks, features, and any associated contributions from residents or organizations. Uh, we also recommend the addition of language to outline criteria for naming rights. Uh, so staff is just looking for direction on this item, the amended policy is attached to the memo.
I know I was looking at what schools do, and then Ms. Wood had said it today when I spoke to you. Can you believe that schools, like fifty percent of the cost of the item that you're, you're naming? So let's say that they built that pavilion, it'd be fifty percent of that for you to have naming rights. That seems crazy, but it, it's in writing. I think ours is really vague, I'll be honest, I, I agree with that, I think it's very vague, I think we have old outdated policies. Isn't there like two or three of them?
Yeah, there were four policies that were pulled together for the amount of one that you guys are looking at.
So, I mean, I think we need to figure out a direction, we need to go here and come to one, most definitely. Uh, what do you, what do you guys think on the... I mean, right now, we have the one with the Lions, where I think that would have to, it's gonna have to go with the old policy, but for moving forward from here.
So Mayor and Council, if I may, um, as Alyssa said, we have, she has combined the policy, so this draft that's in your packet is the new version, and really, nothing needed to significantly be changed. There's a couple of things to clear up, to make sure that there weren't inconsistencies. But if you look on pay, the second page of the policy, where it has naming rights, that is the new section. So there are four criteria to determine eligibility, and really, if there is um, the word that was used previously in the policy was significant amount of contribution, if the council wants to, um, put a parameter and actually a number, what does significant mean? Obviously, that number could be different for different people. So the criteria are, um, that they have to contribute that significant portion of the cost in developing or getting the land, acquiring the park. Or number two, contribute the majority of the cost of the park structure or feature, so if they wanted to um, purchase like an element, or like a park play structure. Uh, three, they have, we have to make sure the name rights is allowed, and that I put in there because, for example, the Isani indoor arena, the way that we have our bonding for that BMX facility, they don't allow for us to give naming rights on that building. So that needs to be a criteria, not applicable to the amphitheater in this case, but needs to be in there. And then the council ultimately gets to make the final decision. So those are the things that were added new to the policy, I think the rest of the policies, when they were all conglomerated together, were just fine. But how do we want to define significant? Do you want that to remain just as that word, or do you want there to actually be a percentage? If you put a percentage in there, but then we don't go with that, well then maybe you don't wanna put a number. So really, that's what we need discussed.
I like significant, gives the city council some discretion there, so...
I mean, a percentage could be, depending on what the total cost of the park, it could be very minor.
Correct.
So...
Or it could be a range, it could be of the two...
I think it's pretty vague, the way it's spoken right now. A percentage, or how does it say it?
Significant portion.
Significant.
That's really vague.
But it leaves, gives us more leeway.
It leaves number, I think number, it allows us with number four, the city council uses discretion determining naming rights, I mean...
I'm trying to think of an example.
I like it.
I can't think of one, but...
You like it as is, Councilman Gordon?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it gives you the flexibility.
With number four in there, it gives us
Yeah.
Like, it says, I mean, we're the, we, we're the final decision.
I mean, I agree, I agree in number one, significant port, significant portion is vague, but
Well, to me, significant, I mean, significant, say the park total cost with land and say it's a playground equipment is a hundred thousand dollars, if they donate seventy-five grand, that's significant to me. They donate twenty thousand dollars, that's not significant.
And I would call it the Lions' park, then, I mean, they put a lion in the fountain, and...
But there's entities within our city that have stepped up, and one in this room, many of times, to donate things to different areas within our city.
Right.
And you're gonna say significant for them to afford a twenty thousand dollar price tag is not gonna happen.
I, I understand that, I'm not bashing anybody, I'm trying to define significant. To me, it's significant.
How do you define it, that's what I mean, it's kinda vague.
It's, and you gotta look at it every individual time, you can't look at, look at it for over a time span, you gotta look at it for each individual project.
Case by case, is
Yeah.
we all say.
Number four.
So I think what I hear, what I hear...
What do you keep speaking of?
What I hear the council saying is, it seems like, I think everyone is good with the policy, per se. We're moving into the next item, which is to discuss the naming rights, maybe of the amphitheater, as what the mayor is talking about, like the Lions' contribution potentially is your example, right?
Correct.
So maybe, if you wanna talk on that Alyssa, we'll just move into that next one, and then maybe that will help you determine if you want to actually put a number to the significant, or leave it alone as a separate thing, the policy can be separate from this next one.
So I don't know, I mean, moving into E three, the amphitheater naming discussion, I don't know that the council, are you aware of what they wanted to donate?
It's link number three.
I think Alyssa's.
So what?
Alyssa's.
Yep, so I can, I can share that as part of the memo.
Okay.
So, um, the Lions Club has offered to contribute a total of ten thousand dollars to, uh, the amphitheater project. That includes seventy-five hundred dollar monetary contribution and twenty-five hundred dollars in seeding for, um, to support the area. Um, they have also with that, they've suggested the name, um, either the I Santi Lions Amphitheater or just Lions Amphitheater. Uh, staff has also made a couple of suggestions, uh, the Bluebird Park Amphitheater, Bluebird Park Stage, I Santi Amphitheater and I Santi City Stage. So that's what we're kind of looking at right now. Um, if you want to discuss what your thoughts are on those names, um, you know, given the contribution I've also included on the memo. Is the list of contributions that the Lions Club has made to the community.
What, what is the, what was the total on the amphitheater bill?
Um, it was just under three hundred thousand.
I think it was like two ninety-five and some change or something. Two ninety, two ninety-eight. I'd like to hear from the Lions, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, absolutely.
If somebody from the Lions, I know there's three of you, so one, if not all, wanna step forward to the podium here? I was gonna say, you've never been shy. Don't be shy. Now, is a green light on your mic?
Yep.
All right. Ms. Elaine Fisher.
Elaine Fisher from I Santi Lions. I'm a new board member this year and I guess. What the Lions had approved was seventy-five hundred dollars for the naming right. And when we looked at the seventy-five hundred, that was a substantial amount for us. We don't have charitable gambling. Like we used to when we could give you forty thousand, fifty thousand for things.
That's what I mean.
And I guess our question that we have is how you would use our seventy-five hundred dollars that we have.
By the sign that says Lions.
Here, 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 here's, here's what I got to say about this. It, as you all know, this amphitheater's been my pet project for many, many years, many years, not just one, not just five. Ten plus years. I'd rather see you take the seventy-five hundred and the twenty-five hundred and put in seating, be bleachers. And those bleachers would be I Santi Lions bleachers. And I think the amphitheater would be its own standing unit. That's, this is my personal opinion and I'm one of the five of us up here. I mean, you gotta remember it's three hundred thousand dollars, you know? That's a lot of money. For a project that I've been pushing and pushing and pushing, that's been shot down for years. And it's, and it's, I'm not, I'm not trying to be mean. I'm not trying to be vicious. I'm, I, I, I'm not trying to be vain that it's gonna be named after me or something. I, 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 you know, ten thousand, ten thousand dollars going towards seating would be huge, would be a huge thing. You know, my invasions of seating out there, what I would like to have seen originally is poured concrete sta- seats. With tubing ran through it. So in winter time, we could heat it up, but that's gonna be more than ten thousand dollars. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money involved in that. But you know, having seats out there for people to sit on rather than the ground is, is almost as important as the amphitheater itself.
Did we, did we plan on seating for this?
No, not right now.
Not as part of the main build.
Can you, I know, we've, I think we've gotten them in the past, the park benches. The mold, the molded park benches, well, they're plastic coated park benches. Some of them have names on the backs of them.
Yeah, I missed, I'm sorry, I missed the first part of what you said.
For seating. Um, a lot of the park benches now are being put in there. Their maintenance free park benches and they, they have, you can have names engraved or not engraved, but. Yep.
Currently, I believe we have some rotary ones at the dog park, I think is what you're talking about.
Yeah, so, and, and I mean, that's an idea.
I mean, I, it, the way I look at it, the amphitheater was going through no matter what. The seating wasn't. And to have the seats with all Lions written on them, every one of them, I wouldn't have a problem with that, not at all, because we weren't spending the money on it. Go ahead, Rick. If you don't know, I've known this guy for eons. Jimmy, he used to be a fireman also, with I Santi Fire Department. I mean, do you have a problem with what I'm suggesting?
No, I, I think, uh, there was some discussion last time that are being, I think the seating idea, this is a good one. I think they, you think so, Amy?
I think we have to take him back to the board again, our members as a whole. We haven't discussed that with the members of the board.
We knew, but there was some discussion on that level.
It was just.
What's?
I think, I think it's okay to take it back.
What's the cost of one of them? I mean, I suppose it, it varies if it's got the backrest or not. But I would think you'd want the backrest on them.
So, yeah, we had estimated that, um, twenty-five hundred dollars in seating would be about five to six benches.
How much?
Five to six benches for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
I don't know if that's the engraved ones though, because I think the rotary were like almost nine hundred dollars per bench for the vinyl rubber coated. Metal benches with the rotary symbol and they were a little bit more money than a typical aluminum bench. I'm not sure which was quoted, but.
But then you also gotta remember, you're not, you know, we put how many out there, they're, they're, you know, they may have a cutoff at, say, if you buy ten or more, it's gonna be less money.
Oh, for sure. And plus if you pick them up, they're, they're less cost too than if you have freighted over.
Chipped and stuff.
Yep.
There's a place down by Blaine, I believe that makes those too.
I would just like, I don't know what other maintenance free styles they have, but maintenance free, I think would be the way to, way to go.
I don't know how the rest of you council feel about my suggestion on that.
I like it.
One thing to ask though is that, I hear the donation for the benches, but I think it needs to be made clear whether that is to give or not give though the naming rights. Cause that wasn't.
Well, I did say the benches could be all named I Santi Lions benches, not the amphitheater.
Correct.
I mean, they're still giving the dollar amount, they're still getting recognized for it. I mean, that's, you know, my looks on it. And I wouldn't have a problem with them having a, having a sign on this, you know, I don't know Alyssa, I haven't been out to the amphitheater. I don't know if there's a way that we're gonna have some advertising on that amphitheater anyway, you know, with them having a sign on there. I have no problem with that. I just.
Some on the side wings, they'll have room for.
Yep, but say, but then, you know, then they can definitely have a sign on there that says I Santi Lions. Generous, you know, generous donation, whatever, however you want to word that. But I think the actual naming of the amphitheater would be something that's gonna stay on there forever. That's just my opinion.
And then I think.
I don't know, I'm kind of torn, so.
I was gonna suggest naming the stage after the Lions or that type of thing, but the seats are just as good as anything else, so.
And the seats could be placed where.
I think you can put a plaque on the back of every seat. Can you put a plaque on the back of every seat?
Yeah, you can.
Donated by the Lions.
It would be, it would be, it's like the Rotary Clubs out at the dog park. And there would be a great, it'd be actually the I Santi Lions in the background.
Even if they wanted to go as far as Lion Elaine's Bench, you know what I mean? They could put their individual names on it for crying out loud. They could.
If you had them arranged where we can add additional ones in the future.
Absolutely, we have to.
You know?
I mean, that way, that way they're getting their money, they're, they're giving us and it's, they're giving us their money. We're giving them recognition for it. It's something that's above and beyond what we planned on doing on that anyway.
So then we're back to what are we naming?
Doesn't have to just go through council, I mean.
I like, yeah, I like, I like Blue, Blue, Bluebird Park Stage.
Bluebird Park Amphitheater.
I think, I think I've seen.
That sounds good too.
Yeah, I think I've seen.
But here's, here's, here's our holdup at the moment. They gotta go back to see if that's gonna be acceptable to them.
Well, the naming would not just, we're not saying, we're, we're giving that naming. We're saying would the donations for the bench, benches be okay, which then they would have to go back and say, hey, they're willing to take the donation, but they're thinking of benches. They're even saying we could put our names on it. Or individual names of the Lions, we, do whatever you want with it. I mean, you're donating it. But the naming is not. The naming would probably fall under one of these four here, I would think.
But that's what they were saying is what they were offering us. They wanted to suggest the name at I Santi Lions Amphitheater. That's where I was getting at.
Right, so if the, if the council.
Not Lions, Lion.
I Santi, it says.
It says Lions on there.
Says Lions on there.
It would be Lion, I Santi Lion Amphitheater.
So, yeah, if the, if the council does not want to have naming rights be given to an organization on this particular element, park element. Then the benefit of choosing a name today, we would bring it forward to council tonight is for, at the ribbon cutting, the name will be announced and. The council can decide if you actually want staff to have a sign made on the thing. A lot of amphitheaters and city parks don't have a name on it, but that's how it's advertised within like brochures and our flyers and our events, our things. Yeah, and rentals, but doesn't actually have like a placard on there per se.
And that's the holdup because that's Saturday.
Correct.
Well, you don't have to name the benches tonight though, do you?
No, no, no.
We're not talking about the benches.
I was saying, that was my suggestion and then we name it what, we ain't named the amphitheater what we want to name it.
Right, I just didn't understand the whole.
You're kinda sitting in the same boat as I am. You're kinda quiet about this whole thing. What are you thinking?
Um, I think, I think Steve's on the right track with the seating and, and that type of thing, or maybe the stage part of it or something like that, like you said, Paul.
I think the seating would be a great addition to something that wasn't planned.
Yeah, right.
That would be, that would be accepting very well to the community to have.
I just thought of Steve. That was my first thought.
But as far as the name of the amphitheater, I don't know that it makes a huge difference. I mean, what do you want to name it, Steve? I mean, it's kind of your.
It's my thing, but.
I wasn't joking and I'm sticking stern with a Lundin Amphitheater.
I don't, I don't need my name up in lights.
It's been his legacy for ten years and the man has fought and fought and fought and fought and he's finally getting it.
I, I, you know, personally, I, I don't, I don't think Bluebird Park Amphitheater, even Bluebird Amphitheater, I, I.
City of I Santi Amphitheater?
I ju, I think the whole thing is that Bluebird Park is our, is our city of I Santi showcase, showcase park. And I've always had the grand idea to make that our grandstand park.
Central Park.
Well, I mean, I mean, you want it to stand out. I mean, that's when we discuss lights in the park type of thing. That's.
If, if you include Bluebird Park in the name, then when you describe it in advertising, people will know where it is too.
But I just, I, I, I'll tell you what, I'll, 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 I'll come back from the grave if anybody ever wanted to change Bluebird Park's name. Because that's, that's always been that, it's there, it's there, you know, I don't.
It's either Bluebird Park or kids used to call it Clifford Park.
Yeah, so the swing set or the playground set.
But I, it's, I. I think, you know, Bluebird Amphitheater is fine with me. I mean, I, I, and I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to sound, if, if Lions came up and said, here's forty-five or fifty thousand dollars, name it, you know, but I mean, it's just, it's.
I don't think you necessarily have to have the word park in there though.
I don't think you do either.
No, I just think Bluebird Amphitheater.
Yeah, I like, I mean, to me that sounds good.
And then Alyssa can line up a play there, Bluebird Play or something this, this spring. Uh, it, it, that's just, that's just my thoughts. I mean, you know, I. But I, like I said, I, that's all I felt about the benches is that they're going to put that in there. That's something that we weren't going to do. And I have absolutely no problem. They want to give us ten thousand dollars worth of benches?
I think, I'd be.
I'll paint them, I'll paint them the colors of the lion, colors, I mean.
Permanent seating there?
Hold Councilman Lundin to that. He would paint them the Lions colors.
I would do them. It might be with spray can, but it might look like a six-year-old kid did it.
You can get them any color you want.
Yeah, no, I know. But I mean, I, I have absolutely no problem with that whatsoever, because that's something that wasn't part of this project. This project was going through with or without them, no matter what.
I think they would stand alone. It'd be their idea. It was the Lions' idea to put seats in it.
Absolutely.
Bluebird Amphitheater would sound great.
So Alyssa will bring forward that resolution tonight to vote on, so then she can market that for this weekend. With that, she is interested to know who is attending the grand opening on Saturday.
This guy has.
I'm gonna try. I gotta be in Lakeville at nine o'clock in the morning until I get done there.
And it is one to three P M, Councilman Lundin.
I know, but I, you know how far Lakeville is from here? It's an hour and a half.
Yeah, but you said one to nine. That's what you said in Josie's office.
It said, it said in the email, one to nine, I thought.
It's one to three.
What, uh, what time are the snip, snippers coming?
About right at one o'clock.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm gonna try to get up here to, I'm gonna do everything I can.
I hope you do, because you're the one cutting it, not me.
Um, yeah, I gotta, I gotta do something there. Um, and then after that, I gotta leave early because I gotta.
I'll say the speech, but he's cutting it.
I'm, I, this week is just a hellish week, so.
Councilmember Berkeley, are you able to attend?
Uh, probably not.
I won't be there. You're not going either, Councilman Gordon? Councilman Carlson, are you?
I, I was just gonna look at my calendar and I think I should be able to make it.
Cause they have to advertise.
So there's three of us.
Is, is, is Ms. Wood gonna sing the national anthem or is your voice gonna be?
Katie's singing it.
Scream it real pretty.
Katie's gonna sing it.
Well, you are just picking on Katie today.
I don't get to see her that often.
That is true. Jaden's been gone on maternity leave with Katie.
Mayor and Council, real quickly to go back to that policy, are we okay with leaving the word significant in there for it to be really called council's discretion?
Yes.
I'm okay. I guess I'm fine with that because it's still gonna come down to council's decision.
I still stand it's vague, but I'm.
I, I agree with you, but it's still coming down to our discussion.
Allow us to have more discussion.
Yeah, I think it's vague too, but.
I'm just gonna throw my hands up. You guys are outnumbering me, so I'll just leave it go. I feel like I'm being ganged up on all of a sudden. We'll move on to E four, the bow hunting regulations.
All right, Mayor and Councils bringing up, up for discussion. We had two thousand and ten adopted protocol or resolutions for allowing bow hunting within the city. Uh, was approached last week or two weeks ago by a resident who was worrying about it. We looked into it. Because of how the city has annexed and changed that it doesn't fit on the parcel that they're looking for, which is at a eighty-eight reversal. So just thought I'd bring it for discussion. On the second page is the regulations, just some recommended changes. Before the city actually identified two different parcels that were allowed, well, one of those parcels is being developed, so that's not really an applicable parcel. So rather than identifying actual parcels, my recommendation was to have a minimum of forty contiguous acres, which there's really not that many properties that would fall into that.
Minimum, how many acres?
Forty.
Okay.
So there's not many parcels that will fit that, but if you have that, I don't have any problem with somebody bow hunting on that forty acres. That'd be the biggest significant change. Just see if council's okay with that change and bring it back forward.
I'm absolutely.
Long as it's not bordering a park. If it's bordering a park, I'd say no.
Even if it was forty acres?
Yep.
Well, what would it?
Cause you're not gonna be able to regulate where he has his stand.
Residential or?
You can't regulate where his deer stand is.
Put it right on the property line that faces the park. I, I get what you're saying. I'm just saying it. I was just saying even if.
Yeah.
I wanted you to clarify that.
Okay.
Okay, and then the other thing is, uh, on, they originally came up with in two thousand and ten was number seven, completed training through Minnesota Deer Hunt, which is actually Minnesota Bull Hunters Incorporated. Was a private entity, which I don't think the city should be in business with a private entity in regulating anything, so.
Take it out.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll bring those changes back there next time.
Notice, um. I guess, nevermind. Discussion for later.
Everybody in, okay in agreeance with that?
Yep.
We'll move on to E five, then the twenty, twenty-two street dance location discussion.
Uh, so continuing on that conversation, staff is looking to council to make a determination of if the street dances will continue in two thousand and twenty-two to be on Main Street and for staff, or if they will move to the new amphitheater.
Is there a plan on, uh, having a big cement pad in front of the amphitheater for people to dance on?
Uh, not a cement pad, no, uh, but the grass area will be.
Uh, not a cement pad, no, uh, but the grass area will be there in front of it, so.
Yes, yeah, I don't know. From, uh, people I know that go dancing a lot, grass is just-
I don't think it's gonna matter, to be honest with you. Have you seen them dance out here?
Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't matter.
There's no trip hazards where they're dancing.
Actually, there is.
Why don't we do both and see how it goes? Or is that way the next year we have an idea of what we want to do?
I like that idea. I'd rather see it on Main Street, but I'm willing to, if we want to try it, split them up two and two and see how it goes.
I guess I would, I've heard more people say to me, you guys aren't gonna move the dan- street dances out there, are you? And I, I didn't really have an opinion up until then.
You know, something else we can look into is what it would cost to rent a dance floor, portable dance floors.
But put, to put that on uneven ground and grass?
They level them down.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, I've seen them. I've seen them for weddings and stuff, but for one that size, better not.
It, it doesn't need to be any bigger than that fork, that intersection, and it isn't that big. By the time you put the band shell up there and then get people standing around, that dancer gets pretty small.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I don't care.
What would it cost to concrete an area of the size of that?
Probably four grand, six grand.
I think?
Thirty by forty is, like, like, because the only reason I know that current prices is because coworker just said his pole barn and he did a thirty by forty pole barn, four inches thick. I believe it was four inches thick and it was-
Do we need it that thick, though? It's pedestrians, not vehicles.
You should.
Because you're gonna have to have cuts in it for cracking.
Well, I'm a-
You don't, you don't, so typically your cuts are-
Or, or here's another thing, throw out Jason. When we have some black topping in, what would it cost that blacktop a dance area out there?
That'd be cheaper.
We have a wear course coming in a week and a half for the liquor store. Otherwise, you know, we could add to, you know, each year's project will have some paving going on.
So I mean, and when you look at it, what would it cost to do, I mean, just, just throwing off top your hat, say thirty by thirty area?
So, yeah, that'd be, I guess I was already thinking, this thirty by forty for the concrete, it'd probably end up being like ten, twelve grand.
Yep.
So, uh, paving or bit, uh.
Mr. Cook's got the calculator out. Everybody look out. And, and meanwhile, you're getting stared down by Mr. Becker.
It'd probably be, it'd probably be more in the three thousand dollar range, something like that.
That sounds better.
I mean, that's something we don't have to do right now either.
No. There's road construction projects next year.
Yeah, well, we're moving forward with the, you know, street reconstruction for Brooklyn South area, you know, we'll have a bigger project on, so.
Something to revisit.
Something to definitely revisit.
Goal setting.
Add to goal setting, huh?
Add it to goal setting.
But we need to talk, I guess we need to discuss the dance locations now at this moment, right?
I guess I, I, I would like the idea of both. I mean, I agree with Jimmy. I'd, I'd like to see them stay downtown, but I know, I know there's gonna be that, will it work out at the amphitheater or not? So I say let's try both.
One thing you could do is you could go back to three of the downtown I Canny Street Dances, is that's what they're called, and then do a something of a different name of what's down there for some kind of community event and have a different name, not downtown street dances, because not really applicable, and have a new thing be started. I know Alyssa has some great ideas for things and there is money budgeted next year for her to do events out there. That can just be something else that she's planning for something different than the downtown I Canny Street Dance.
Here, here's what I would entertain the council and do is go talk to every business on Main Street and see how they feel. Because I've gotten calls and emails, so I know how they feel.
Well, then, how do they feel?
Go talk to them.
Well, I talked to a lot of them. I don't know if I've talked to every one of them.
They're tired of the vandalism, they're tired of the garbage.
Is that right?
They're tired of, and, and I think the chief could back me up on the vandalism, uh, Josie could back me up on the garbage because I went to Mr. Sylvester and her on both items.
Well, I haven't looked at that.
That's why I kept pumping that public safety was huge in my mind, that you put them in a park, you're gonna have better eyes on them. They throw garbage, one of the cops are gonna see them. If they vandalize, one of the cops should see them.
I do know this, when you, when we do our street dances, it's like, it's like Grand Central Station from the VFW walking up here.
Yeah.
It's, it's bad.
And there's trash that'll go all the way.
Well, do you want those people to walk or drive home from the park? Because my point is-
Well, let's, let's put it this way. There isn't a sidewalk between the VFW and here, other than a painted line on the side of the road.
Yeah.
And there, they fall, they walk like they would drive.
Yeah, well.
And you don't see them.
Well, that's why I get back to trying both, because I've had people come up to me and say, you're not gonna move the street dances, are you? I've had, I've probably had, I would say, five, six, seven people.
They've, yeah, been told or asked the same thing, if we're gonna move them or not.
Well, what do they say? Do you say?
There's a gentleman sitting right there that works the street dances. What's his thought?
The businesses are saying that. They park right on the grass.
Easily, right in the park.
So if you're gonna have dry under or-
The vendors?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yep. And we have power inside.
Don't sugarcoat it, huh?
I'm not, I never sugarcoat anything.
I'm teasing.
I don't, I don't think they're gonna do, if, if the grass is dry, I don't think they're gonna do any damage compared to when they're out there mowing it or driving heavy equipment on it.
A couple of years ago, we had horses and cows in Bluebird Park.
That did some damage.
But it came, it got repaired very quickly and they didn't even know it.
I think a bunch of people-
After the organization took place, it looked really great.
Yep.
I think a bunch of people dancing on it for three hours can do more damage than a trailer just sitting there. You know?
I mean, for me, it's more, I mean, the atmosphere of inviting people into the heart of the city and, you know, having the buildings around and, you know, the streetlights and I mean, to me, that is just a better atmosphere for a party, you know, but that's the main reason that I'd like to keep it there, you know, and and I understand the businesses being irritated with some of the things that go on, but I mean, that's been going on.
Well, I'll take, I'll take, for, for right now, for test purposes. I agree with Ms. Wood. Let's keep, put three of them out here and let's pull one out there.
Sure.
That's this year. I mean, we, this is something we have to set forth right now.
Yeah.
And then we get one year out there, first year out there with the amphitheater. They may say, hey, I like coming out here better.
Yeah, and even the police chief might say it was so much easier at the, you know, I'm, I'm open to the fact that maybe it is easier for the police. If it is, fine.
I, I'm not against that idea.
I'm just telling you what the, I'm just telling you what the public has been telling me. They, they prefer, I, I've heard people say, you're not gonna, they, they, they ask, they, they don't want to move, so.
Some of, some people that have talked to me about it, um, said it's more centrally located downtown, because you get a lot of families that walk from, you know, all the neighborhoods up to the street dance.
I think they're gonna come from, I think they'll come no matter where we put it, but.
Right, but some families won't be able to walk.
Right, yeah.
From, like, say, I Canny Meadows, that far, especially with kids.
Mayor Council, I think that we should let Alyssa bring some ideas forward, because a lot of, of things I've heard from people talk in the community is they'd love to have like a concert in the park series, even before the amphitheater came, and those are typically like on a weeknight. It's not a weekend. And that, I think, may bring in a different crowd, and if we're trying to appeal to all different groups in our community, giving something like that would be a little bit of a different party atmosphere, more of like, maybe it's more family friendly or it's just different. Um, that could be something that could be really value added to the community. So we could let Alyssa bring some ideas when she starts, um, knocking those out.
So back, back to E five, I, I think we should do three out here and do one out there for right now, this year.
I would agree with that. I was gonna go two and two, but three and one.
I'm okay with that too.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
Sorry, just one final thing. Is there a preference on if that's at the beginning or the tail end? The one that's out of the-
I think you're, you're the expert on this. I think you, you, you know, you're, it's like, Ms. Wood says you're going to be doing, you know, some other things out there. You'll know how, which one is jogging in there.
I would say early on, like number two or something, just because if it goes over so well, then we could say, well, I guess we were wrong and move another one else.
I think we should leave it to Alyssa.
Okay.
Just a, just a thought. Well, I guess it, it doesn't, never mind. That wouldn't really matter, so.
Mayor's getting frustrated.
Yeah, I am. I'm just not gonna go there. Let's, let's move on to E six. The, uh, finance-related policies.
Oh, it's seven o'clock.
Gotta go.
Well, a lot of, a lot of this shouldn't be controversial, right? Um, so I've got one, two, three, four, five, six policies that are finance-related that I would recommend we just simply repeal. Uh, one is a grant management guide, which doesn't apply. I mean, it just doesn't, it gives guidance that you would be getting from a state or federal grant anyway. State, federal grants are gonna tell you exactly how you're gonna do stuff and you will do it that way, so having a policy that dictates that ahead of time isn't necessarily helpful at all.
Thanks for saying that one.
Yep, so we get rid of that one. Um, second one, use of municipal liquor store net profits. This is sourced from nineteen ninety-seven. We addressed it, we addressed, repeal it. We address it every year on the budget and it's the council's discretion to, to do what they will. Uh, not sure why we needed a policy on that. Um, third one, uh, liquor store funds for special events. Again, that's addressed in the budget cycle, and if it's outside the budget cycle, that's council's discretion to amend the budget to use money for that purpose anyway. Don't need, don't need a policy for that. Uh, fourth, liquor store cash balance. Um, I think there should be a target on that, but it should just be rolled into our general, our broader fund balance policy, which I address later on, so I would re, I would repeal that one as well. Uh, fifth one, transferring surplus funds from prior, previous year. This is from nineteen ninety-five. I suspect that they simply had different accounting procedures or capabilities back then, but I mean, this is simply addressed as, I mean, that, that's called accounts payable reconciliation at the end of the year. I mean, if, if you bought something in two thousand and twenty and we paid for it in two thousand and twenty-one, it still gets coded to two thousand and twenty. That's kind of a moot point, so I don't know that there's any real benefit to that. And if there was something absolutely really large, again, we'd go to the council for a budget amendment to make it clear that we had unutilized funds in the prior, in the prior year. It should still just be going to council anyway. Um, so we don't really need that, in my opinion. Um, fee policy on existing home, commercial and industrial buildings. This one is meant to clarify when fees would apply in situations for existing structures and especially for existing structures affected by annexation. Um, to my mind, sack and whack fees always apply and all the other fees are negotiated within a development agreement, which, again, the council is going to approve anyway. Um, so why we would have a policy that's gonna dictate that, I'm not sure that that's a necessary policy either, quite frankly. Um, so those would be the ones I would just recommend we just get rid of. Um, minor language change on tax abatement business assistance policy. I think it's a good one, especially when you're looking to have businesses coming in looking for, um, some assistance. Um, it's good to be able to have a policy that says, here are some guidelines that the council would, would prefer to stick to. Um, in that one, I would just simply remove the language that has a five-year limit. Um, we've already abandoned that limit, uh, with the hotel project anyway. It doesn't mirror up with state statute and I, I, I don't know why it would, should be anything other than the council's discretion as to the, the terms of the assistance anyway. Um, so we would just, just get rid of that language in that one. Um, the big ones would be, uh, fund balance policy. This is one where we would address, um, general fund, fund balance. We've di- I've talked to the council, I don't know, at least a dozen times over the last few years, about the idea that right now we have this target of fifty percent and that if we're deficient, if we're below fifty percent, that we are gonna have a plan to get to fifty percent. And I've advocated for a number of years on a number of occasions that really what I ought to be looking at is we want to have a range that goes up to seventy percent so that we can have that cushion so that when we do have bad economic times, we don't have to have the tax rate go through the roof and have people open their tax bills and be terribly surprised. That even though times are tough for them, their tax bills still gotta go up. Um, if we float that fund balance up to seventy percent, we have that cushion, be able to get through at least two budget cycles and be able to keep that tax rate low and make sure that people are not surprised even in bad times, so that they can feel good at least about this jurisdiction's, um, approach to taxing.
So even if we hit that, uh, depression, we would be prepared for that?
If, if we had had seventy percent when the Great, uh, uh, Great Recession came.
Recession, yeah, what did I say?
When the Great Recession came, um, things, things sort of looked very different. And, uh, and it would have been to every resident's benefit, absolutely. Um, also then in that fund balance policy, then we incorporate, um, all the enterprise funds, water, sewer, storm, liquor, all of them, and just say, we're looking for fifty percent of next year's expenditures at the end of the year, and we want to have our appropriate, approved provision for capital improvements, right? Put together that schedule. We know what that cash dollar amount we want is. That's our target, which is what we're doing in rate studies already anyway. So they would just formalize that. Um, next to one, which has a pretty big, uh, change is investment policy. A lot of it's not that different, but our current investment policy sources back into the nineties and has not been substantively updated. It doesn't cite correct statute anymore, um, and it is very limiting on what I am allowed to invest in. For the most part, it's, um, agency bonds, right? So Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, that kind of stuff, or, um, CDs. State statute would provide, uh, state statute provides for a much broader portfolio. Um, and I would just match up with what is provided in state statute less. I would, the, the policy that I'm recommending would take commercial paper off the books. Commercial paper would just be debt that, you know, any private business might issue, and you could buy that at a very high rating and still lose your shirt on that. Lehman Brothers is a perfect example. During the Great Recession, you could have gotten double-A rated Lehman Brothers, uh, commercial paper and thought that you were sitting very good with city funds and you would have lost everything. Um, so I would recommend we not entertain that, but otherwise, basically invest, uh, match the investment policy up with state statute and the guidance there. Purchasing policy, um, we've updated the, um, references to, uh, the finance committee to move toward, um, uh, committee of the whole. Um, also, uh, changed the dollar threshold, so, um, right now, uh, department heads can go up to a thousand bucks. Problem is that a thousand bucks doesn't buy as much as it did back in, you know, fifteen years ago. And so we bumped those numbers up. Um, if I remember right, it's twenty-five hundred, five thousand and twenty thousand. So twenty thousand would be the threshold that, that, um, Josie could go up to, and then after that, it would automatically go to council. Um, so just moving the scale, but the, the structure of it and the oversight of it all stays the same. Um, the other is, is that there was a provision in the, in the current policy that says the finance committee, um, can approve an unbudgeted expenditure, a needed unbudgeted expenditure up to a, um, what's that, a thousand dollars? And that we would just, I would just submit that we just move that authority to the city administrator. Um, you know, we don't have a finance committee and there are gonna be times where something is needed, um, and we may not be able to just wait for the next committee meeting of the whole. And so we just give the city administrator some, some authority to, to move outside the budget on those items.
You said finance committee. We don't have that anymore. Is that what you said?
That's what I'm getting at. There's, there's still that one line in there that says, now, the finance committee is authorized to, for unbudgeted expenditures up to a thousand dollars, you know, to, well, which-
He would have to change that language to committee of a whole.
Right.
And then the amount as well.
Because that used to be a thorn in our side, that finance committee, right?
A lot of committees were a thorn in the city's side.
Well, what I'm recommending is if we don't move it from commi- finance committee to committee of the whole on that one, I would say for that type of thing, if it's, if it's a needed thing, like, you know, borderline emergency, we should just give the authority to the city administrator. That's what we pay her to do.
No, 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 she's a surety one.
And she, and she, she, just like I understand, we still answer to the council. It's not, there's nothing that, you know, but it's the ability to act quickly and timely. Um, then the final one would be, this is a whole new policy. This is a single audit policy. This, this is simply, when you receive at least seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal grant money, in any combination, it could be one grant, two grants, five grants, seven grants, whatever, in one fiscal year, you are subject to a single audit based on, uh, federal statute. And this basically just reaffirms that, yes, we understand that and we will abide by that and we will do the things that the federal government is requiring us to do. That, that particular policy is a recommendation of our auditors. Um, and they've actually asked, they've recommended that for a couple of years, but not made us think about it, but as we're going through all these policies, it's time to address it, so. So if there are any questions, um, all these are in here. Um, it's kind of a lot of pages, but, um, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to field those.
Oh, you did a good job as usual.
Thank you.
All makes sense to me, inflation, things.
Yeah, the, with the purchasing policy, moving the dollar amounts, that's kind of irked me for a while. Um, I've, I am, I end up being the de facto technology purchaser. And it gets to be problematic when I'm trying to buy computers or laptops that, you know, a computer might be twelve hundred bucks, laptop might be twenty-seven hundred dollars, and you start to look at that purchasing policy and realize that I need to go out and field a whole bunch of quotes for this, and it's like, I, I know where I'm buying my equipment from. I know I'm already getting a good deal and even if I shop around, I might save a dollar or twelve. Like, it'd be nice to just be able to just do what I know is, is right and just, and not have to worry about whether or not I'm in violation of a policy, even though I know I'm doing things the- even though I know I'm doing things the right way, so.
And I have faith that you're gonna do what's right and I know your pockets are pretty tight, so. When it comes to city money, so I, I, I have faith that you'll, you'll do what's right, you're not gonna frivolously spend. I think all the policies make sense, as Councilman Collison said. Inflation, uh, outdated, unnecessary policies, I get it all. So I would, I would, I'd be with Councilman Collison and they say, you do what you're gonna do and X, A, M.
And when it comes to purchasing, I mean, all, all the bills always come before council and council can always ask to review any invoices or requisitions or any of that documentation anytime they'd like, so.
Anybody have any objections, questions, comments, concerns?
No, I think it looks good.
Thing all makes sense.
Oh, um, I got two notes, I almost forgot. Purchasing policy, we're gonna add, I'd like to add a reference to our credit card policy. Uh, when I sent the purchasing policy over to our auditors, they said, well, hey, what about this? I said, well, that's a separate policy. They said, why don't you please reference that so that everybody understands there's a second policy? We have a credit card policy, right? With all the safeguards in place and so they just would like that referenced in, um, in the purchasing policy just so that we know that policy exists even if you only read the one. Also, the other option would be is to, um, to sit, right now, we require sealed bids at a hundred thousand dollars. State statute says sealed bids at one hundred and seventy-five thousand. And it, at the time, this was written, it was, the state was one hundred thousand. It's just a question of, do we wanna just, again, mirror up to, um, state statute or keep it at one hundred? My recommendation is just to match up to state statute, I think it's easier, clearer, but.
That's what we do with engineering projects as well, so it makes sense.
Sounds good to me.
I'd say mirror it.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, moving on to E seven, the resolution to repel policies.
Thank you. So Mayor, so what you're seeing with all these policies coming through in Mayor Council is, so we have a lot of policies in the city, as you can imagine. I know a lot have come through in the last few years, but we have them going way back to the beginning. So one of my goals, since I've been city administrator, was to pull them all together because otherwise you have staff who comes in and they don't even know that there's a policy exists on a particular item. So one thing that I've been putting together is a full manual of all of our policies and part of that project was to go through Divio, as you just saw, Mike just did his, send all the finance to him, all the police, public safety staff to Travis, and have, make sure that all of our policies are not only all in one place for, so we, all staff knows, but they're also all current. So that's part of why you're seeing all these policies come through right now. We did ordinances not that long ago and then my next step was policies. So in the, or in the memo here for number seven, there is a list of resolutions and these are resolutions that I'm recommending to appeal, repeal, as well as the one that Katie just passed out because I didn't have that on my list or within your packet. And so these are policies that have a number of different things. Either statutes changed, therefore it's no longer applicable. The policy language has been put into city code, thus being enforceable. As you may recall when we were going through our ordinances, if we have policies that are by resolution, they're not actually upheld within court. We have to have them within our city code. So once we've done that, which we have, then the, the policy by resolution is no longer needed, it's not necessary. And then we have a number of our policies that were put into their applicable place, whether it be personnel policy, police-related items went to Lexapol, liquor store-related policies went into the liquor manual. So all of those have a home now, there's no need to have this because it might contradict it and we don't want staff to be confused when they're looking at our policies. So the list there that you see in the memo, and, and in addition to two thousand three dash zero zero seven, which is on zoning violations, those have all been, um, put into their applicable places or not needed. Uh, the other two things that I have, um, one is not in your memo, is our revolving loan fund policy. We had that policy, I believe it was back in two thousand and two, but it was amended in twenty twenty, not that long ago, through the EDA. However, when I was going through all our policies, it actually never got approved by council. So I will be sending that through to council, so council's approved it. Um, as the EDA just made their recommendation for the amendment, it needs to actually be formalized at council.
Could you restate that, I didn't hear what you said.
Sure, so the revolving loan fund policy that we had, um, EDA had reviewed it back, uh, January seventh of twenty twenty and made some minor amendments to that policy. That actually never came through council for formal approval, so that will need to be done.
Didn't we vote on something else with EDA too, about, about, um, a loan or something? Just, just recently, maybe you were not that.
I probably, you may have, but it wasn't a policy.
Okay.
It wasn't a policy. Um, and then the other thing which is included in your packet here is a new resolution for a authorizing the establishment of a permit and plan review fee, refund policy. This was a policy back from two thousand and four, it is a good policy to have, although it needed some amendments as, um, statutes have changed. So that's also included in your packet here. Really is just cleaning house of all our policies.
Well, I believe that the less, the better.
So we have this because we're gonna vote on this tonight?
No, that's just to show you, cause I didn't have it written in my memo that we're repealing that because actually all zoning violations are written in city code in chapter two sixteen and nuisance chapter.
Okay. Thank you.
So these will be moving forward to council, you'll see them, um, in, beginning in November.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, well, it worries me when you're starting to... Personal policies, policy manual or Lexapol, and all your talking, talking police. So that kinda worries me.
But I'm talking about police policies? Old police policies that were approved by council back before we had Lexapol no longer needed as the new current policies are in Lexapol.
Gotcha, all right. Well, see, now you define that, I feel a little more comfortable.
She just doesn't wanna have anything contradicting.
She was just getting rid of all the.
She's getting rid of the junk.
We talked about it.
We talked about it, but now.
When the chief brought on Lexapol, we had that discussion, we talked about, I forget the exact word.
I think there's so much of it that.
There was a personnel, there was a personnel policy that was, was conflicting with Lexapol and she's.
We're just making sure we're mirroring, that's all we're doing. Are you getting rid of the old?
We're getting rid of the old, for example, when travel reimbursements became a thing back in, uh, whatever year it was, let's just say two thousand and six.
Eons.
Travel reimbursement after that, at some point, had been added into our personnel policy, which is approved by council on an annual basis. There's no need to have a separate policy that talks about travel reimbursement because as time goes by, that is not updated because now we have a manual, a book, a policy book that is approved. So I'm getting rid of all the ones that we would have potential contradictions, which, for example, that one would.
Gotcha, okay. All right. Uh, E eight, police and liquor staffing changes.
So typically, we don't talk about staffing changes a whole lot during the year, we do those at goal setting. However, there's a couple of things that I'd like to have the committee discuss, um, on, for inclusion, prior to the beginning of next year. Um, one of them is within the police department. So as the police department had, their, um, admin staff has grown, uh, there has been a, because of the demand of workload and just obviously the, the volume of things going on with the city growing, uh, we needed that part-time secretary position. So when we reviewed all those positions and how they were interacting and talked to Chief Myers, um, their staff had wanted some review to be done as well, is that he does actually have one of those positions overseeing the other two part-time positions. So when that was brought to my attention, I thought that there needed to be a thorough analysis and comparative study done because that had not been looked at prior. None of those admin positions had been in a supervisory capacity before. So when I did the, um, the analysis, I looked at the cities that you see within your memo and to see, well, what were their salaries, what were their job duties? Ms. Grotty helped me to reach out to all these cities and I got all of the job descriptions for all of their positions that had admin, police, support staff to do that comparative analysis, not just of points and pay, but also of what their job duties were because sometimes a title is very arbitrary, it doesn't really mean exactly what ours was doing. So when I looked at all that, I am recommending that there needs to be an adjustment taken into consideration. So currently, we have a full-time police, um, secretary position. And what I'm recommending is because that oversees the other part-time staff, that it be re-titled as police support specialist. The points range would be one ninety-four, or points assigned would be one ninety-four and it would move up one grade level. So currently, that position is at a grade level nine and this would go up to grade level ten. And you can see within your memo that it has the steps included, um, one through nine. So for the most part, between our different grades within our structure, um, for salary ranges, it's about an eight percent change. I'll take any questions on that before I move on to the other one, cause the other one's a different department.
I agree with that, though, she, she or he, whoever's in that position should become safer. Basically, you know, supervisory.
Yes, when we look at the matrix of how points are assigned, um, there were zero points given for supervisory capacity within that position previously.
So this is a full-time position, though?
It's already a current, full-time position.
It's already, it's supposed to be part-time right now, but it's.
Nope, it's actually full-time already.
All right.
It just would be a reclassification.
Okay.
She's supervising the two part-timers.
Okay, so she's full-time, so she's.
So she's.
Basically supervising the, the part-timers, but.
But not being paid for it.
But not getting paid for that, okay, sure, gotcha.
Correct, not adding a new position or anything.
Okay.
I mean, I agree, I think she should be paid, or he or she, as Councilman Collison said.
Keep it open, cause.
Yeah.
Yep.
Didn't I leave and someone else come in?
She's superseding two individuals that are part-time. They, he, or she.
It.
It, there we go.
Yeah, let's just call it it.
So I, I agree, it should be compensated.
The other things that were taken into account was the skill level, um, and what needs to be done, going through with Chief Myers on what, what that person does and, um, the skill level that they need to have to make sure that they can be accountable for the databases that they go into. I do feel that that is applicable to this too, so those points in the matrix were bumped up as well.
Which I'm assuming it would be very knowledgeable of that stuff. Another reason to compensate.
And this person is already doing that role, so if the recommendation from the committee is to move this forward, then it would be brought forward, um, for that salary change for that individual at an upcoming council meeting.
Would that just be on our consent agenda then?
It'll be on consent agenda, yes.
I don't see a problem with it.
How long has that employee been employed, full-time now?
Twenty-some years.
Twenty-eight?
However, I will say that that doesn't get taken into account, into the matrix, it is just on the position, the duties by.
We wanna retain that person. That's what I'm getting at.
What if that person retires?
Well, then, this is gonna help hire the next one.
Yep. You see, we can't help if they're gonna retire her, I mean, you're gonna retire her.
I mean, regardless, it would, it should be changed, just because of the.
I'm retiring from the council.
Job description doesn't fit what she's doing.
That is correct.
Well, and the job has changed over the years, right? You used to have those part-time people, you just had her, right, so.
Well, and I think increasingly with more, um, regulatory functions that had to do with the BCA reporting and all these other things, there became an inherent more to know, more to do that has built over time since twenty-some years ago for sure.
Yep.
I did include an updated, um, job description that has, um, the police support specialist job description that would be, um, then adopted at that council meeting as well.
Okay, liquor store one?
The next position to consider, is so currently at our liquor store, and the way that it has been, is we have, um, three full-time staff. We have a liquor store manager, an assistant liquor store manager, and then one full-time clerk. The rest of the staff is part-time. One thing that we are seeing, um, with, there is just a shortage of part-time clerks that we're able to find. Ms. Grotty can explain that even in more depth, that's how challenging it is to get people, not only to apply, but then to come to their scheduled interview and then to come show up for their first day of work. It has been very challenging and we have seen a lot of turnover with that staff just cause there isn't a lot, it's, it's their second job, some of them need it at a certain amount of time, but then they don't need it any longer. Um, there's not a lot of, not, there are some great dedicated part-time staff. However, there are a lot of like, well, it's not my full-time gig, I don't really have to care a lot about it. And one thing that we do think that the new liquor store especially would benefit from, um, being that we just have that many more hours to staff, is to have one more full-time person come in. It would be at the clerk level, which as you can see within your memo, the twenty twenty-one salary at a points-assigned position of one twenty-four is grade level five. The pay range starts at sixteen dollars and seventeen cents and goes only up to nineteen eighty-nine rounding. It's really not a high-level paid position, but making sure that it's full-time benefited. We will get a whole different pool of applicants come in and we think that it would be a great addition to the store.
I agree.
I agree.
What hours will they be working?
They would work forty, they, yes, everyone's required to work some weekends and evenings, whether you're full-time, even if you're full-time. Uh, but they would work forty hours per week. We typically don't do overtime for full-time staff, but.
Mr. Gordon knows all about staffing problems.
Do you think that's an inhibition to hiring people, weekends and, and, uh?
It's just a fair playing field.
You're just gonna get one more employee that's stable and comfortable and comes to work?
Well, I'm not saying let's not do it, but I'm just saying that, I'm just talking about the recruiting side of things, it's a little tougher to recruit and that. I'm just wondering what she thinks, is it, is it hard to recruit somebody based on, I'm not saying let's not do weekends, I'm not saying let's do evenings. I'm just wondering if it's harder to recruit, that's been a question.
Harder to recruit everywhere, everywhere.
No, I get that too, I try to recruit people from my office too, so.
I do think that, um, retail hours is not for everyone. I think when people know that they're applying for a retail job, they know that that's just part of the job. Um, we try to be very conscientious of people's, um, time, so getting to a structured schedule so they know what weekends they work and what evenings so they can, um, plan for that in their life, I think works for a lot of people if they've chosen a retail career.
What did you say, that, so it would be step five and how much?
It's a grade level five, so step one, um, is, oh, maybe I said that, I skipped step one, I said step two, didn't I? Step one is fifteen dollars and sixty-nine cents, well, seventy cents rounding, and it goes up to nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cents at step nine. We don't typically start anyone at the top, they're usually towards the bottom there.
Okay, and then that's, but if they're full-time, they get benefits too.
They have a chance to get to the top.
And a chance to get to the top, right, okay.
So there's incentive for them to keep coming to work and.
That's pretty good.
Working hard and.
I dig it. Anybody else not dig it?
No, I think it's cool.
I think with another full-time person would be good, yeah.
We all dig it.
We dig it.
So we will likely recruit that person in and then you'll see it come through on council as a, a full-time clerk position when we offer the position to someone, thank you.
Is this why Jason's here is the next one?
Let's move on to E eight, or I'm sorry, E nine, the stormwater rate study.
Actually, Mr. Becker.
Oh, Mr. Becker.
That's worse.
We're gonna be here for another hour.
He's just here to make us nervous.
I will say before, I do have a couple of added items after this item.
Make it quick, Michael.
Well, this, this one is super easy. Stormwater rate studies are probably the easiest utility rate studies you can put together, but, um, well, how about this, uh, I'm recommending that we, for twenty twenty-two, we cut the rates for stormwater by twenty percent. In twenty twenty-three, I would cut them again by fifteen percent, and in twenty twenty-four, I'd cut them again by ten percent.
Absolutely, I think we'd have a lot of happy people.
Amen.
And I, I recognize that sounds bonkers, but even at that, that still leaves us a lot of cushion to mitigate legislative risk, right? Should new regulations come down the pipeline, we've already accounted for that. We've already accounted, in addition, even with those rate cuts, we've also accounted for potential that we might split, um, costs on a, on a county project that we're not yet aware of. Um, we've also put aside a money and, you know, considered into the schedule one point one million dollars of capital expenditures in that fund and this still works.
I'm gonna tell you what, you're gonna have, there's a lot of people who wish it would go away completely, but it's not something we had a choice. So I think by doing that, you're gonna, you're gonna help that.
I'm confident he likes his job and he knows what he's talking about, so I say we do it.
People, you know, fifteen percent sounds awesome, but people probably won't.
Yeah, so this.
Notice it that much because this, this is a stormwater, not sewer or water.
Oh, they'll notice it.
They'll notice it.
They'll notice it.
Right, but I mean, it.
I notice it, I look at it every time.
I didn't think it was really high to begin with, so by lowering it?
But if you take, you take, you take a business that's paying, that's paying a hundred and fifty a month? Hundred and fifty, not eight dollars like a resident does.
Yeah, you're cutting that twenty percent, good lord, they're gonna notice in a heartbeat.
They're gonna notice that in a heartbeat, you're not gonna notice the twenty cents they're gonna lot, we're gonna get on ours, but those businesses that are paying that a hundred and fifty, they're gonna notice it in a big.
So over time, that's a big savings.
Because we do that equivalent residential unit classification for all parcels, right, for all residential parcels. Any one resident may or may not think that this is a big deal, but yes, the businesses that got five, seven acres? Yep, 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 they're gonna notice a big difference, and they're gonna be quite pleased about it, and that's, again, goes to keeping our tax rate down, being competitive, and bringing in more businesses, because they like the environment that we're setting up. So, okay, I'll move forward with that then.
Miss Wood. Miss Wood, batter's up, what do you got?
So with the liquor store, we, we're talking about the roof, and we don't have any ice guards that were currently bid out with the project. So to add ice guard rails to the roof, which would save it from ice damage, not only just on the roof, but if ice sheets came off, have them for bed, like, down onto the ground, onto someone. So the consideration would be to add the dual railing, which at that pitch and size, the roof is recommended, would be seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars, have it installed all around the building. So staff is requesting committee to consider that cost, I think overall, that's probably a good move.
That's kind of a punch in my stomach, but at the same time, if we add a lot less of that.
Do we need it all the way around the building, or just where there's sidewalks and entrances?
I think to save.
It's probably not gonna really save a ton of money if we skip.
Yeah, but what if we had somebody in the back of the building offloading a truck, and ice fell on, and they're throwing their pants off?
There's a doorway there probably, and it's.
Or there's somebody's car that's parked over there, and ice falls on it, and we, I mean.
I'd rather go around the whole building.
On the roof dam, for ice damming also.
Yeah, I'd rather go around the whole building.
We actually do have sidewalks all around the whole building, so technically, if you were looking at from sidewalk perspective, it is all there.
I don't think it'd really save much.
I hate, I hate, I hate to spend the money when we've already approved what this building was gonna be done, but I think seventeen thousand dollars, one person gets hit by a chunk of ice, it's gonna cost a hell of a lot more than seventeen thousand.
I'm surprised we missed that.
Yeah, I'm surprised we did miss that.
Cause we, we were pretty thorough, I thought, and.
You're laughing.
I was gonna say two things, one, it's super easy to miss that in the heat of summer, right? I mean, that's one thing.
Fair enough.
The other is, is that if we, if we don't do this, unfortunately.
Thanks for making us feel good, Mike, I appreciate that.
As much as I don't wanna spend seventeen grand, when we started having ice problems up, up at the BMX, that was forty, fifty thousand bucks, and we didn't, nobody even got hurt.
I do remember that.
And that was just gutters and softened fascia, I mean, so this, as much as I hate to spend it, it's probably a very good investment.
It's kind of like a.
I'm for it.
First snow, then you find out if the snowblower's gonna start or not.
I'm for it.
Okay.
Consensus?
Yeah.
Perfect, and then the other thing was, so back in the beginning of stages of the new liquor store, there was consideration of naming the Beer Cave after Bozo and Luella. I want a little bit more discussion on that and what the direction is.
That's what that call was.
We were.
Yeah, what'd they say?
We were informed that they had the request for the name to be Bozo and Luella, Pauline Beer Cave. So looking for direction, if that is what we want to be the big sign, because then staff will begin designing and, and ultimately purchase that, so we have it here and in place for the grand opening weekend.
That was the call that I had to take when we first, that was, I was talking to a family member.
So hopefully, everybody knows the history of Bozo and Luella, if you don't speak now, and somebody can reiterate.
Just, just to reiterate, Bozo was the manager for many years, Luella took it over from him. She took it over when it was here, and they moved it over to the new, to current location where they are now, and she retired from there.
They're, basically, they're the founders of the municipal liquor store.
The liquor store in Iceni. And that was a family member that I took a call from, what their thoughts were. And that's what I told Ms. Wood before, and I tried calling her before we came in here, and that's what I said, I should, we should leave it up to them what they wanna call it.
That gives me the release.
And that was, ten years from now, they're not gonna, if you just called it Bozo and Luella Beer Cave, they won't know who that is. Greg knows who I'm talking about also. So if you say it Bozo and Luella Pauline Beer Cave, I think they would be very happy to that, cause she, Luella did just as much work on it as Bozo did, cause she was there side by side with them.
I've heard many stories from Bozo and Luella, so I, I, it gives me warm tingleies to know that they're gonna have their legacy placed in our municipal liquor store. I'm for it.
I'm for it also.
Good to go.
I, on that item, if we do have the consensus to move it forward, I will actually bring that tonight to council for a verbal vote, just so we can move forward, and so we have the, the funds in place to order that. My other recommendation is on it, a lot of times when you see that something's dedicated after someone, you'll just see a, a framed story about it, so if staff is asked, well, who is Bozo and Luella? You can say, you know, there's a story right on the wall there, so I think that that might be something that we will add.
I think that's even a better idea.
That's something that we can add right next to that.
I think we can, we can get that information from the family, or Luella even, so they can get it written up, and we can put it in there.
I believe that our, our liquor store manager, Keith, has already met with her, and I believe he has that story, so we just have to have him type it up for us.
Well, just as long as you have somebody to clarify the language, because I know that family, their language just gets used a little different. There's no beating around the bush with that family.
Maybe you could have, I don't know, is there any pictures available of the old liquor store from over here?
That'd be kind of cool.
There should be, there was some at one time.
I see any history photos, I can definitely look for that, I don't think I've ever looked.